They're still doing all their meetings by Zoom, but she says the bottom line is I can't.
Okay, I'm going to call the common council meeting to order. If you could all please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Michelle, if you could please help us with the roll call?
Sure. Doug Saloga?
Here.
Jim Barron?
Here.
Jackie Valdi?
Here.
Wayne Dean?
Here.
Matt Grimmer?
Here.
Phil Kason?
Tim Iker?
Here.
Kent Atwell?
Present.
Tom Hafner?
Here.
Jim Hammett?
Present.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to make an announcement going into closed session. So basically what that means is we'll vote to go into closed session. Anyone that's here that's a citizen that's not participating in the closed session will be asked to leave. We're going to have a discussion and then we'll come back in and reconvene the rest of the meeting, just so you're aware how that works. So item number one, motion to convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.851E deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting of other specific public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. More specifically, to discuss the bargaining for a successor police union agreement and pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.851G conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. More specifically, the Heartland Sportsman Club litigation. Can I have a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Okay, Michelle, roll call vote.
Doug Saloga?
Yes.
Jim Barron?
Aye.
Jackie Valdi?
Aye.
Wayne Dean?
Aye.
Matt Grimmer?
Aye.
Phil Kason?
Aye.
Tim Iker?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. We are now in closed session. We're just... Okay, welcome back. We have finished our closed session and if we could get a motion?
I'll make a motion that we go back into open session.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call vote please, Michelle.
Doug Saloga?
Aye.
Jim Barron?
Aye.
Jackie Valdi?
Aye.
Wayne Dean?
Aye.
Matt Grimmer?
Aye.
Phil Kason?
Aye.
Tim Iker?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, and moving forward, Jim Barron's and Kent Atwell will be representing the city in the police negotiations. Okay, we will move on to number four, citizen, city of Dellafield citizens' comments. Any citizens like to come up and make comments? Come on up.
It's going to be quick. Peter Thomas, 2610, Nagawicca Road. To the members of the common council, I would like to make two quick comments in regard to the Nagawicca Path Project. Again, these are comments, these comments are brief as it is difficult to have a meaningful one-way conversation. My wife and neighbors would be more than willing to have an open format with all. First, I have concerns as a taxpayer on the bidding and rebidding process. Since the initial bids were too high, there were design changes, project items being changed, adjusted to get a lower value, and don't believe this reflects the true cost of the project. In these unforeseen times, the city deficit, the city is in deficit. I would think responsible city leaders would look at reality before spending taxpayers' money at this time. Second, I'm not sure if emails are always read and would like to state for public record that the comments made by Alderman Brenner were disrespectful in regard to the ditch being eyesore. Your comment may pertain to a small unkept section in the past maintained by the city and should have reflected such. As an elected city physician, I would expect acting with integrity instead of comments made, which I felt like the method to influence others who are not residents of the area. I have photos to support my comments. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Who would like to be next?
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Steve Rittenhouse, 2520, Nagawicca Road.
Heartland.
The COVID pandemic has economically affected the majority of the Dellafield citizens, either through job losses, lower household income, or loss of value in our investment portfolios. The city of Dellafield should examine making sensible and modest budget adjustments in anticipation of dwindling tax revenue from property taxes and sales taxes. In response to COVID-19, many Wisconsin municipalities have already made cuts, frozen spending and hiring, laid off workers, and drawn down their rainy day funds. Over the past several months, the municipal bond market has shown signs of unprecedented stress and volatility. Local governments like Dellafield depend upon this market to fund their infrastructure for things like schools, roads, pedestrian paths, as well as to bridge short-run mismatches between revenues and outlays. Dellafield has a safe A2, relatively safe A2 rating on their municipal bonds. The current interest rate on municipal bonds is approximately 1.5%. Typically, it's in excess of 5%, and issuers issuers are having to offer discounts between 4% and 12% in order to make them attractive to investors. Because of the low investor rate of return on these bonds, some municipal bond offerings are being withdrawn from the market due to the lack of investor enthusiasm. For the near term, we can no longer rely on the selling of municipal bonds to fund our capital projects, to smooth the, or to smooth out the impact of our fallen tax revenue due to COVID-19 in Dellafield. You might not believe me, so I urge each of you to do a Google search, a Google search, or to seek an outside opinion to support what I'm trying to tell you. All of those opposed to the Nagawicca Path Project are aware of the cost to construct the 3,150-foot sidewalk. The bad publicity and blurred political optics of this project at this time are not advised. Sometimes the best decision is no decision. At a time of forced conservative consciousness, the news media continues to report government waste stories, and all of these stories contribute to the mistrust of our elected officials. The point is that the path on Nagawicca Road should not be part of the history of wasteful Dellafield spending. This leadership must develop contingency spending plans based on an economy not seen in recent history. The future development of this city is directly related to the future of its economy. I respect the hard work and the dedication that each of you have demonstrated over the years by serving on various committees and volunteering your time to the community. As an observer of my surroundings and circumstances, I urge you to absorb my comments above as an honest plea to vote no to the Nagawicca Road separated path, and I'm grateful for your time and attention.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
Good evening. Cindy Thomas, 2610, Nagawicca Road.
Cindy, if you want to get closer to the mic.
Okay, how's that?
A little closer.
Okay.
There you go. Now you're on.
So I'll, I'll make it quick. Obviously, we've been here again and again, so you all understand where we're coming from and personally where I'm coming from in this regard. I just want to make a plea that, an understanding that I'm not against the path, I'm for path. My, what I'm asking is that we execute the paths based on the comprehensive plan that is being developed, that we're paying $25,000 to develop. It's the right thing to do, not to spend almost half a million dollars on a half a mile path. This path, if it goes forward with what is being projected, is going to cost almost as much as the entire Mission Road reconstruction. How does this make sense? It's just too expensive. Let's look at another design. So I urge you to all consider the immense cost and the situation that we're in as far as a community. Can we afford this and should we afford it? What's the right thing to do? Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you for your comments. Any other citizens' comments? Seeing none, citizens' comments are now closed. Okay, we'll move on to item number five, consent agenda.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda. Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions passes? Okay, we'll go on to number six, committee reports. Licenses, 6A, we have none. 6B, planning commission?
I was not at the June Plan Commission meeting, but the minutes are posted and just knowing, knowing the agenda and the actions taken, the one good takeaway from that is ongoing investigation, just deeper dive into how we look at special exceptions and variances and all the different terms that are thrown around for the purview of the Plan Commission that deviate slightly from what our standards are stated in our code, and that's something our new planner is taking on with vigor to help us in the future, and so that's going to be ongoing. Aside from that, I'll give you an update on what looks like our next meeting at the end of July.
Great, thank you. 6C, Lake Welfare Committee.
No meeting, no minutes.
There we go.
Coming up this week.
Okay, 6D, Park and Rec, Mr. Grimmer?
Park and Rec had a meeting on 66. I know this committee discussed the relationship with Heartland Park and Rec. Some other items of discussion at that time were essentially a park walk, discussed the St. John's sailboat finish, some shoreline restoration at Cushing Park. No other, no other action was taken at that meeting. The next meeting is 7:15.
Great, thank you very much. 6E, Public Works, Jim?
Well, we had the, the topic of discussion is the path on Nagawicca Road, and the committee voted to recommend to council, so I'll make a motion that we approve the construction contract with Always Contractors in the amount of 13, 314,75330.
Can we have a discussion before?
We need a second first.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second. Now we can have a discussion.
So I can start. First of all, there, there are engineering costs above this, so it's not the 300,000. It's about 70,000 more that I know of. I will apologize because a majority of the ditch area has been maintained by the residents, and I, I made a flippant remark, and I have to say it goes back, I've been around 30 years, and at one point that ditch had been constructed after sewer constructions and had been cleaned out several times and had no growth in it, and this is primarily on the south end, and that's, that's how I made my comments. The, the ditch on the south end, I think, has always been too big for that close to a road and should have been filled and put into a storm sewer a long time ago. I also know that the past path proposal did not involve filling that ditch and had the path much more pushed into the people's yards, even though it might have been in the right of way. And when I saw this plan, I think this is the way you accomplish putting that path in there and, and flattening out that ditch. We adjusted some things in this contract. I observed this. I've observed this in almost every other contract we've had for something special in this town, whether it be this building or a roundabout. The estimate is put in at budget time for budgeting purposes, and sometimes we win when the bids come under and there's no more adjustments, and sometimes you end up with value engineering. And you wonder if the ones where they come under, if we shouldn't reconsider some things, but what they did is basically come up with some ways to save the contractor money. A good example is using the Oakwood Park area for some of the fill. I know that they're going to have, instead of closing the road, they're going to have flagmen and women, and so, things like that. The savings in the end, in our discussion, appear to be about $25,000 to $30,000. We also removed the north end, which was a motion, a mine at this council to add it in over the Public Works recommendation two or three months ago. So the Public Works said, we never recommended that you pave the, the north end. And there's some discussion as to why, but they did not have an original proposal. So yes, this thing has been modified, but it was always for the purposes of trying to focus the discussion and contain the cost.
I think that, as was commented here earlier, and I think a lot of people in much more crowded sessions have all expressed a support for paths and making pedestrian movement safer. So I don't think anybody's anti-path or anti-safety. We're sitting in a room with blue tape everywhere strategically spaced. We're in the middle of a global pandemic, and it is wreaking a lot of uncertainty, leaving a lot of uncertainty in its wake. It makes me very uncomfortable that something that has been, without really any real argument, not 100% supported. There was an impassioned plea to pull the project from a Public Works Committee member a little while ago, for a lot of reasons. Some of the changes, and I am not an engineer, so, but my understanding was that some of the changes weren't the best. One of my understandings is that there are a lot more street crossings to sort of try to accommodate objections there crossing the street more, which is often a more dangerous thing to happen. So I'm concerned in that it's almost like we're trying to push it through because it was technically approved, so now we have to just go ahead. And I firmly believe as a lifelong runner in paths for people to move safely. I also believe that anything worth doing is worth doing well, and I have a hard time understanding why we want to push forward with something that has been tweaked and moved, and I know that often happens, not always, but often. And, but we have a committee right now using, who's I think, $25,000 to kind of connect the ideas and the paths and where they might go best, why we wouldn't at least wait. And then on top of that, my concern is the financial times in which we find ourselves are unprecedented. I'm not a lifelong statesman, but in my eight years on council and in my many decades of life on this planet, I haven't seen anything like this. So we don't know. So I'm, I'm a little incredulous that we keep pushing forward. I understand that there are procedures, but I also know that where there is crazy situations, there should be a way to just simply step back. So I'm very concerned with just pushing forward. That's my comment.
At the risk of older reference and lost on younger viewers, ditto.
Yeah, going back to the statement even that you made, Jackie, there's still...
Doug, can you please speak into your mic?
I can't hear you.
Doug cannot hear me? Is that better? Can you hear me? All right.
There you go. Do it, Michelle.
Exactly. Just don't touch it. There's still overwhelming support for, for the path and the, the region. I hear about it still. I know we've gotten fair opposition, and you know, that's, that's good to hear as well. But going back to the idea of where it would be located, I think this was mentioned in previous meetings. I mean, Nagawicca Road is the most used road on the whole east side of the lake, so any, any plan would ultimately utilize Nagawicca Road. And the path has actually been discussed for, well, at least 25 years since I've been a resident there, where I live. And you know, I feel this is an investment in a city. If, if cities don't invest every year in projects, they'll fail in the future, and they'll, they'll, they'll reap, reap that non-investment, kind of like a retirement fund. If you don't invest every year in your retirement fund, upmarket, downmarket, you will, you will pay the sacrifice. So I, I feel this is still a good investment for the city. I think the Public Works Committee has done more work on this project and all the different iterations than any other project they've probably done, and I trust their professionalism and their recommendations. So I still support that.
I'll, I'll comment that, you know, I, I may have been, I may have been distracted when with the Mission Road project in my neighborhood, while this was, while this was going through its development, but nevertheless, I know the, I know the area well, and I've visited it recently and talked to some of the people here about it. And I was really perplexed about why it didn't get passed 12 years ago, when I was first dipping my toe in the water as far as being involved in the city government. And some of that was highlighted to me as far as, like Jim referenced, how deep into the trees and that far off the road it would meander. And it wasn't clear if that was public right of way or not at the time, but I have to say that I think what's, what we have in front of us is, is not perfect at all, but that's because you, we have to, we have to answer to so many different masters on this one. If you look for the least expensive path, that would be utilizing a lot of the west side of the road wherever you could. If you're looking at keeping in the public right of way, you gotta, you gotta go where it's going. But then you get into the expense of the ditch. And so, I mean, I, I agree with the fact that I've seen the traffic, how it's increased over the years along that street, and I think getting pedestrians off the road is as important now as it ever was. I was disappointed to hear that it sounds like telephone poles are going to crisscross as a result of this. I'd like to, I don't know if that's part of, are they mean the utility wires? I don't know if there's any way to negotiate with We Energies on that.
It was We Energies' recommendation that they do that, given the old infrastructure of the poles that are there, and where the tree growth exists and where they forecast it to exist based on what's there. It was We Energies' choice to want to move three or four poles to the other side of the road. There's power issues in the area, and they're also taking this opportunity to upgrade service to individual residencies as well.
All right. I didn't know if anything else was in the mix there, or, I mean, I don't look, I think it's a bad aesthetic cutting back and forth, but it also is, it's also bad aesthetic to, to cut an L corner out of a tree canopy to keep the power lines free from the...
I would, I would, I don't know how we verify that because I know on the Milwaukee Street project, which was way more work than, than this one, let me tell you. The Milwaukee Street project, We Energies moved some poles and cut down some trees, and the city was told one thing and the property owners another. So we might want to verify that because it's a really sore point, seven years after some big trees came down. They were told the city ordered it, and then the city said We Energies did. So we just want to make sure who's actually, what is it?
We're sure what I'm repeating to you is the city engineer's testimony during the Public Works Committee meeting.
I'm just saying what I observed with Milwaukee street residents being told. That's all. I just want to be sure.
We would, I would like to see that close coordination is kind of what I'm asking.
Yeah, that's all. Just close, just make sure, because...
You know, but all those, all those things put, you know, combined, like I said, I don't, I don't think there's a perfect design for this based on all the different parameters we have to deal with, but it's not going to get, it's not going to get less expensive if we kick the can down the road. And, you know, I know people that ask for it. I know that were looking for this back 12 years ago, their kids are growing it out of the house, and they're still asking for it even though their vested interest is not for their kids anymore. So I understand the frustration with somehow communicate, some of the communication that's occurred or not occurred, but this still has my support.
Okay.
I'd like to just piggyback on what was stated earlier regarding the, the timing of it. Given the fact that we don't know, have any idea what this economy is going to be providing for us, I just think it's at least waiting one, one year. I know costs do go up, but I'd rather go into something knowing what the costs actually will be for long term as opposed to jumping on something now. I realize I did not have any part of the, the planning process, being new just the past few months, but it sounds like there, there might be some other alternatives in there as well. So I am also concerned about the, the financial implications that come along with that.
Just make sure that the council is aware. Last council meeting, you guys did approve the borrowing for this project, so that borrowing is occurring in mid-July. We will be borrowing the money to fund this project.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
You got it? Okay, motion carries. Okay, we will move to 6F.
We have a few more items.
Oh, sorry about that.
And these are things that the committee did, and they don't come here, but just so you're aware, we had a request for additional signage on Milwaukee and Main Street, and the committee voted to try and add a one-directional sign over there. And the real problem is is people wanting to go on Main Street on GPS, end up on Milwaukee Street, and then the first few drives become turnarounds. And that's the frustration. It's not that people, you know, are over utilizing Milwaukee versus Main or anything, but if they knew it would go through to downtown, I think they'd be fine, but it's just, that's what's happened. So we're going to try and add a sign. Jackie Valdi made a request to look into the parking over on Mill Street, and so we're going to, we're going to do a little survey of the neighborhood because it seems like whenever there's a sign up there, someone owns it. up there, someone owns it. And yet it may be just a general application of no parking around Bleecker Street. So we're going to survey the neighborhood and ask for their opinion on parking on the streets with the goal of removing as much restriction as we can.
Yeah, I mean, I also had an idea of even doing parking with permit, you know, like seeing a little sign or something.
Put that on the survey.
Yeah.
But the people are frustrated because in front of their own house, they can't park on either side of the street. And so their own contractors have to go down a block. Then we had a request--
Just be careful, you don't get cars and boat trailers, right?
It's already a municipal code, you can't park the boat trailers. It's already in our code. Trust me, Tom told me that one.
And then we had a request for one more signage at the corner of Nagawicke Road and Key Point Lane because people are missing the curb. And so they're going to attempt to do some of that in coordination with the approved project. And I think that corner, in my mind, is going to come up in the future. But I have some ideas, but we'll put it on agenda. But we're going to try and put another sign, and the path will impact some of that anyway. And then somebody's concerned about passing on the right on Main Street outside the mobile station, and we chose to take no action only because we're going to have a four-way stop just east of that location that should slow down traffic. But passing on the right is illegal, but there have been no tickets issued. So that's the rest of it.
Great, thank you. Okay, 6F, Delahart, Mr. Iker.
We did have a meeting, and we went through our budget audit there, and things went really well. And our plant upgrade is slightly, I'll call it on time and under budget, it's a little bit delayed, but we're going to be up and running with everything by fall with the new UV filters, I mean, UV lighting, decontamination, and the disc filters instead of the sand. So anyway, if you want to get more into it, come take a tour. It's actually very educational. That's all I have for Delahart. Oh, also, I was re-elected chair, and Mike Myers is vice chair, and Irv Sadowski still does books as secretary.
Okay, thank you. 6F, Police Commission, Mr. Saloga.
Yeah, no meeting, no report. Next meeting is in August.
All righty, thank you. 6H, Library Board, Ms. Valdi.
No meeting. Our next meeting is the 14th, right here at 6:30. Today, though, I do want to mention, was the first day of a partial opening. So I'll have a summary of that, so things are sort of moving along for the library.
Great, thank you. Okay, 6I, Zoning Board of Appeals, Phil?
No meeting, no minutes.
Good. 6J, Promotion and Tourism, Mr. Barron.
Meetings next week.
Okay. 6K, Lake Country Fire Commission, no meeting that I'm aware of. 6L, Lake Country Fire Board, Mr. Grimmer.
We had a meeting last week. Budgets are refreshingly, surprisingly, revenue is coming in fairly well on budget. We had a little slowdown in late spring, but things have rebounded in May. Expenses are in line. The training center budget revenue is above projections. So from a budget point of view, things are looking really good. Deliberations from the various town, Wales, Genesee, they continue to make those deliberations on consolidation. That's about it. Any questions on any of that?
Does the council have any questions about Lake Country Fire and Rescue mergers? I mean, there's been a lot of activity over the last four to five months. Has everybody got a good understanding of what's going on there, or anybody need clarification?
That consolidation obviously achieves economies of sale, cost savings. The fire chiefs' budget projections over 10 years is about a $1.2 to $1.4 million budget savings for the city of Delafield, assuming that these three communities, these three other communities come on board. For those communities, it is a fantastic deal, in my opinion. Improves their service.
Improves their service, and they get cost savings as well.
Absolutely, they get cost savings.
So it's truly a win for everyone.
Yep.
What's the timeline of everything, if you just keep walking ahead?
First of the year.
No kidding? A little quicker than the last one.
I was in here for that one. Thank God.
Man, it's four communities when you had the Condamoc Lake--
Oh, Condamoc Lake, yes. Thank you, Tom.
Yeah, all councils or village boards have voted to proceed.
Yep.
It's just the tweaking of the legal language, so--
And our budget impact on--
Buying something major, it's on track.
Yep, and our budget impact of 2021, I think, is roughly between $50,000 and $50,000 to $60,000.
And this helps us in the operating budget line, that this helps us with maintaining our labor costs now and into the future. So that's where our big struggle is with our budget coming up this year, is the operating and the labor cost. And this is a step in the right direction.
And kudos to the fire chief for being aggressive and pursuing these communities, and of course, to Tom and the mayor.
Okay, thank you very much.
In exchange, is there a kind of a trade-off as far as any additional controls that we might not be, I mean, there's got to be some drawbacks, I mean--
The drawback is you move from a, let's say, 2468, six-member board to a 14-member board, because each community will have two representatives. So there's a lot more, there's a lot more opinions, but I don't know that that is a huge disadvantage. There's, you know, anytime you have various communities, you have different community needs. But we are all somewhat rural communities and share similar demographies and geographies that would be consistent from city, Sheniqua, Neshota, Wales, Condamoc, Town, et cetera.
And all have been working with each other in the past, right? They all have cultures that are somewhat similar. So there's a hierarchy that's been laid out so that nobody gets laid off, and the number of management positions is reduced, but yet everybody feels equally representative. And from a budget standpoint, I think it's important that every community has a veto. If one community vetoes a budget, so you're talking, I think I heard you say control, then Lake Country Fire and Rescue is required to live under the prior year's budget. So there is, in my opinion, there is no loss of control. Each of the communities that are joining had the same control that the city of Delafield had when we were. We didn't lose any control, and they still have control. Each community has control as well. So it's up to the police chief to make sure all those needs are getting met.
Fire chief. Yes, and that collaboration, cooperation is in continuing education that the city, that Lake Country Fire and Rescue really specializes in. It's the joint training missions, et cetera, et cetera. So they all know each other, they've worked together in the past, so there is a shared culture, and it's not a spranger.
You know, I guess I think way back to Delahart, there was a time when we didn't want to help Hartland's problems, and they didn't want to help us with our problems, and yet you have this infrastructure that costs a fortune.
Yep.
And we've created this organization that does that work. And there were some rough spots early on, but now it works so well, and it serves both communities well. And fire service, there was a lot of redundancy that we're trying to eliminate and, you know, just eliminate forever. There'll be a day when every, it probably grows just like every other cost again, but right now, there's a lot of redundancy. There was a time when there were more fire apparatus in Waukesha County than in the city of, or city of Chicago. And that's just an old general statement, but you're seeing through these consolidations, we don't have to buy as many trucks and things like that, and utilizing labor, which is no longer free or volunteer or low rate wage, it's full pay. And so, in one sense, we're forced into it, and in other sense, if we look to the past where we've seen regional cooperation work, I think this will work the same way.
Those are great points. And, you know, Wisconsin comes from a tradition of lots of local government.
Yes.
You know, I think per capita, we've got as more elected representatives--
Well, we have 3,000 units of government.
Yes, exactly. And you just can't continue to provide good services at a reasonable cost without consolidations like this. And consolidations like this have to keep moving beyond Fire and Rescue to other portions of government. Absolutely have to.
Great. Okay, we'll go on to 6M, Tree Board, Mr. Grimmer.
Tree Board had a meeting 66. All trees for 2020 have been planted. The tree fund's balance is $96,500, and the five-year tree planting plan has been approved. I'd refer you to the minutes.
Okay, 6N, Dear Management Committee, that's me. No meeting, no report, but I anticipate them having a meeting either the end of July or the first couple weeks of the following month. Okay, 7, Unfinished Business. Seeing none. Number 8, Mayor's Report. Already said what I had to say. Number 9, New Business. A, 2019 Financial Statement with Independent Audit Report and Required Audit Communications to the City Council. Tom?
Yeah, in your packet, you do have the 2019 audit and the required communications to the City Council. So hopefully you've had a chance to peruse those so far, and if you have not, please do so. With regards to bottom line for 2019, if you recall, we had budgeted for a net loss, so to speak, a use of fund balance to budget, to come up with the budget of about $74,000. The actual utilization or net loss was $195,000, and that's attributable to one item in the budget. And that item is, we had identified a revenue as the sale of a fire engine. That was $120,000 revenue that was budgeted, and that's an asset that we have not sold yet. It's been for sale since April of 2019. We started off with a price of $120,000. It's through a national consignment company. We, after not seeing significant action, we did lower the price of that to $109,000. And now, as you see on our agenda, we'll be talking about that more and what we want to do going forward. But that alone accounts for the difference in what we budgeted and where we ended up actual. And, you know, we can rely on some unexpected revenue in 2020 from the sale of that engine. What that did to us as far as financial standing, at year-end, December 31, 2019, our unassigned fund balance for the general fund was a little over $1.5 million. That's about almost 24% of annual expenses in the general fund, and that compares to the year prior, we were at 27.43%. So that follows that trend that we talked about, that right now, we're in a budget situation where we're relying on our fund balance, and we're spending that down to meet our budgeted expenses. So any questions on that?
What's that percentage again, Tom?
As far as where we're at at the end of 2019?
Yeah. There's two numbers that you read.
So at the end of 2019, we're at 23.89%, and at the end of 2018, we're at 27.43%. And that actual dollar amount at the end of 2019 is just over $1.5 million. Any questions on the audit or the comments to the council?
So other than the fire department, or the fire truck sale, we basically operate it as we budgeted?
Correct.
All the statements or findings or suggestions seem pretty consistent with years prior. Was this, in your opinion, is this a little lengthier than ones in the past? Is there new people on the staff? It seems a little bit more verbose.
Yeah, there was a change in the primary person that put together the report at Johnson Block, and I would say it was more thorough, for sure.
Okay, no, I don't mind it. I just, it just seemed like, I was, in years past, I was done reading it when I was a third in the way through this one, but that's fine. I appreciate the extra info.
Okay, so we'll move on to 9B, Discussion Possible Action Regarding the Sale of the City's 2001 Pierce Enforcer Rescue Pumper Fire Truck. Tom?
Yeah, you know, this would really represent a significant budget change if we're not going to realize $120,000 from this truck. You know, right now, our consignment company is recommending that we look at reducing the price from $109,000 down to $90,000 or $95,000. He's indicated some confidence that we would be able to sell the truck at that price. Our fire chief at this point is suggesting that we might want to go away from consignment and sell it at the Wisconsin Surplus Auction. He suggested a, coming in with a minimum bid of $60,000 and see where we end up. He noted that the Village of Sussex recently sold a similar truck for somewhere in the $70,000 range. So just kind of looking for direction on that. I'd really like to try to still realize some more revenue out of this, and I'd like to stick with the consignment company and reduce our price down to $90,000 or $95,000, see if we get more action. There's a little bit of a pressure for us to move the truck sooner rather than later. It's being stored at a town in Delafield, their old fire station. They'd like to see the truck moved out of there. The Public Works Department does have a place to put it during the summer. We could put it in our cold storage building until early October, but then we got to house our harvesting equipment in there. We have established the fact that it could fit into the fire department Station 1, but it wouldn't be ideal for them and their operations. But with all that being said, I would really like to stick with the consignment sale and try to reduce our price down to about $90,000. And just looking for direction on the council if that sounds like a reasonable plan.
The Sussex truck sold for 85--
70-something.
70-something?
Except low 70s?
That's, it was in the 70s.
How often do they have the auction?
I believe it's monthly, if not more frequent than that. It's regular.
Okay.
You know, I don't think--
I don't have any issues lowering the price.
Yeah. I think it's not fair to the fire department to leave our assets sitting in a town facility. And they've been gracious to let us leave it there for a year. I think we need to either get it into, get it out of there, get it into somewhere we can store it and sell it, you know, at market price. I mean, what the market dictates what the pricing is, and we need to move this asset, so--
Is it 90 what the city would get, or is there consignment fees that deducted off of the 90?
That's what the city would get. The buyer pays a consignment on top of that.
I asked this question, so I'll answer. This is, some of the remnants of our consolidation with the original ones, I don't know if people recall, but we get to sell the old equipment and keep the money, and that's going to probably kind of be petering out now. I'm sure there's not much left there that--
Correct. We got one big truck still coming, the ladder truck.
Okay.
So Tom, if we were to move it to one of our facilities, how long can we store, can you say the date again, that we'd have to get it out of the cold storage building?
Early to mid-- Early to mid-October.
You think it's reasonable to leave it up to Tom, just it needs to be sold by early October, one way or the other?
I can't guarantee a sale.
Yeah, unfortunately, technology's changing in those worlds too, and I'm sure there's things that communities just buy new.
The cost of money is nothing.
Yeah.
So an investment to buy new is easy to do, easier to do.
But keep in mind, this is probably, to buy new, over $600,000.
Yeah.
It's only worth what somebody's going to pay for it.
Yep.
Which is what we're finding.
It's 20 years old. You know, it's--
Do we need to have a motion?
Tom's looking for some direction. I think we need a motion.
I think I'm hearing, I think I'm hearing some consensus to be more aggressive in the price drop and sell it sooner rather than later.
Yeah.
It's not paying any bills. It's creating bills.
Yep. It's a depreciating asset. We don't want to keep it.
October's going to be here fast, no matter where the truck is parked.
It's worth less-- It's worth less next year than the year after that. And every month, it's worth less.
Want to drop to 80?
I'll leave it at your discretion. I think 95, 90 to 95 is a good starting point. You know, if you, I assume there's some negotiation involved, and if you get a nibble, be aggressive. That's where I would be.
I concur.
So the rest of the council gives a head nod to what Matt said? That is the direction that I would need, then?
Yes.
Yep.
October 1st.
Put some plaid pants and a white coat.
Nice white shiny shoes.
Thank you.
Okay, 10, Report of City Officials Administrator. Any report, Tom?
No report this evening.
Okay. Michelle Clark.
I'm looking for a discussion and action on the voucher list.
One second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions, passes?
And then the next side of my half for 10B2, the Seventh Circuit Court of Appeals ruling affecting the in-person absentee voting and residency requirements. So I'm just going to give you a timeline on what happened. We received the ballots on June 22nd, started in-person absentee in the office, and we mailed everything out on that date. On June 30th, we received information from the WEC, the Wisconsin Election Commission, stating that they wanted to have us stop doing in-person absentee at the counter and save it for the two weeks prior to the election. That they wanted to change the residency requirements from 10 days up to 28, so they'd have to live in this area for 28 days at least if they wanted to vote here. Otherwise, they'd have to go back to their prior location. And then they, that we could no longer fax or email absentee ballots to anybody but military and overseas, because we have some people that would prefer having it in an email. We then received additional information on July 2nd saying to not put that stuff into effect right away, and that it won't be in effect until July 21st. So currently, right now, we are still doing in-person absentee voting until we get further information from the WEC, which is roughly going to be around July 21st. So I'm just asking that residents either come in as soon as they can or that they continue to follow our website for the updates that are going to be occurring within the next week or week and a half.
And our next election is August 9th?
August 11th.
So as of today, as of tomorrow, as of this week, they can come in and vote?
As of today. I might receive something tomorrow that is too sweet. So, you know, have people call. We have information listed on our website to call us beforehand, but we're trying to keep that as up-to-date as possible, so. And it's right on the front page, too.
And you don't need an appointment?
Do not need an appointment. It is 8 to 4:30, Monday through Friday. Bring your photo ID. We recommend people bring their own blue or black pen, but we do have pens available.
And it's a true statement that everyone that requested an absentee ballot, it has been mailed?
Everybody that has requested one, it has been mailed out. We are required to get those out within 48 hours. Our office specifically does it within 24.
And is that for every election, or if you request it once? Because I actually got the ballot in the mail, and I didn't, I requested it for the April election, and then I got this one too. So how long is that extended for?
It depends on what you selected. So you can select an individual election. You could select everything for a calendar year. And if you're indefinitely confined, you get it until you don't return one. Then we stop it. A lot of people, approximately 100 people in the city of Delafield, signed up for indefinitely confined, because they thought that COVID met the recommendation for indefinitely confined, but it actually didn't. So some people are getting them, and they don't know that they signed up for that in April. So I can check specifically for you tomorrow if you want to. Give me a call.
I'm just curious if you get asked. I just want to know the answer.
I'll say no.
So people would have, there would have been a response.
Yeah, so most people weren't sure how long this was going to take, so they did sign up for the rest of the year. And we do push absentee ballots at the city hall, because then there's less people coming on actual election day. And we do have the process of absentee voting listed on our website. We put it in the communicator, because I want to make sure that people understand that we are very on point here with our reports, matching what we have, matching what's locked up, and that everything is, it has to be verified by more than just one person, so.
And those three questions are still on the questionnaire when people do submit for that, the mail-in ballot?
Those will always be on there, yeah.
Always, yeah.
One election, the entire calendar year, or until you don't return one? Is basically what it is.
Thank you for all that work. That's not simple.
We'll still call in, because somebody will ask something that didn't quite meet that criteria, and then we won't know.
And those are the best ones. They really get you thinking. Thanks.
Okay, 10C, Council Request for Future Agenda Items.
I actually have a couple. I know you're excited. One is fairly simple. I've had some discussions back and forth about clearcutting that I've noticed. One was at the Bleecker Street boat launch. But then I noticed I did outdoor yoga on Sunday. It was awesome, by the Fish Hatchery. And as I walked by, there's some large, sort of dead areas along the shore of the Barba River. And I'm guessing it's purposeful. So my request is that we maybe, as a council, I don't even know if it's a DPW thing, but as a council to discuss maybe putting some kind of signage or explanation. Because it looks bloody awful, but I'm guessing there's a purpose. And if people like me saw it, and you could say, why are they doing this? This, you know, will be the future home of native prairie plants or indigenous whatever, just to say why or what's going on, even if it's just a temporary little sign tacked up in the area. I have an image I can share. I took a picture of the Fish Hatchery area. My second request is for an agenda item for the, in light of what I was speaking to earlier, these unprecedented times, I'm requesting that the common council discuss a formation of a committee of independent experts to advise us on the current budget situation, and that the city itself pause all expenditures beyond personnel and legally obligated expenses until a report, a report from this committee is publicly submitted and discussed. And from that report, we base our actions. These are crazy times, so that's my request.
Okay, great. Are there any other ones?
Yes, I have one. I'd like to add an agenda item regarding optional powers for the police commission. For those who aren't aware, there are state statutes, 6213, states that more powers can be given to the police commission in the day-to-day operations of the police department. I'd like to add a conversation and discussion about offering optional, optional powers to the police commission.
Okay. Anything else? All right. We'll move on to number 11, Correspondence. I'll refer you to those. Number 12, Seeing No Further Business. Therefore, the meeting is adjourned at 8:25.